We'll go ahead and open the public meeting and we'll call for Mr. Cullen to present the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, in the book, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Do we have certification of the closed meeting at this time?
Resolution of certification of the closed meeting of September fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven twelve of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended.
So moved.
Second.
If Board members will please vote.
We have no public speakers on agenda topics, so we'll go to reports by the superintendent, Dr. Whitney.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to the podium Mrs. Beth Ann Bradshaw, our Public Information Officer, to start off with our Good News Report. Ms. Bradshaw.
Good evening. And each month we share with you and our viewing public some of the great things that are happening in our schools each and every day, some of the outstanding accomplishments of both our students and our staff. Tonight we will highlight some of the activities our graduation and e-learning coaches are focusing on in our high schools. I'd like to call for Dr. Sinette Byrd, Director of Secondary Leadership, to start the presentation.
Greetings Chairman Nebraska, members of the School Board, Dr. Whitney and guests in the audience. It is my pleasure today to introduce to you our three e-learning graduation coaches that are located at each of our high schools and they are going to talk to you today about some of their accomplishments and celebrations of our students. I will first hear from Nicole Duplain, who works at Nanshun River High School, followed by Tanya Spruill from Lakeland High School, and Renee Townsend from Kings Fork High School will close us out.
During the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year Suffolk Public Schools was able to provide numerous resources to support future twenty-first century learning as well as college prep and readiness skills for our students. Having a full-time GED teacher in addition to a graduation e-learning coach housed at each high school has made it possible to provide students with an alternative to dropping out. Graduation e-learning coaches serve in many different capacities. We are an extension of the Guidance Department, helping track dropout and unconfirmed students, verifying all students meet the graduation requirements, and addressing truancy in attendance. These are just to name a few. Through the use of virtual learning, we are able to offer creative scheduling for our students. This allows us to offer resources outside of the traditional classroom setting and scheduling. Just a few creative scheduling designs include Z Block, which is a block offered after normal school hours to assist our students, Credit Recovery, which allows students to recover a course that has previously failed and in the traditional classroom setting, Initial Credit Courses offered to students with scheduling conflicts such as Governor School students, or Advanced Courses with limited offerings, On-Time Graduation Assistance, which helps our students meet the requirements needed for graduation, which allows our students to take more than seven courses in a single school year, Homebound and Alternative School Offerings for our students that are unable to come to the traditional school setting, and Blended Learning, which allows teachers to supplement and differentiate curriculum instruction, all of which have developed with the implementation of our e-learning handbook, Edge Annuity, our virtual learning platform, allows us to have instantaneous feedback with real-time data allowing us to assist when and as needed. Given these resources Suffolk Public Schools has been able to serve the diverse needs of our students. Mrs. Spruill will now take the time to share just a few of our successes.
Good evening. I will speak briefly from the statistical side of virtual learning and the use of creative scheduling. We have two hundred forty-nine unique online courses offered with two thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine enrollments. Out of the two thousand nine thirty-nine enrollments, we had one thousand seven hundred sixteen students that were served through online courses excluding PE and health. One hundred twenty-four middle school students were served in virtual learning using MyPath. So through the use of virtual learning, it has allowed the graduation coaches the flexibility with creative scheduling. For example, in August, we pulled our SSWS report from the Virginia Department of Education to capture our dropouts and unconfirmed students. I located three of our dropouts from this report and contacted them in reference to coming back to school because they had no intentions of returning due to age and pride. The three students was as old as twenty years of age. We call these our super seniors. These students were placed in virtual learning without coming to the building, but I stayed in constant communication with them via phone and home visits. I am happy to report that these three students completed their courses and have received their standard diploma. Secondly, through the use of creative scheduling, it has allowed us to make use of the GED Academy. I located a young female who dropped out of the GED program three years ago due to pregnancy. I reached out to her and she agreed to return and complete the program, three days a week, only for half-days because she is the caregiver of her disabled mother. I am happy to report that this young lady completed the GED program and participated in the GED graduation on June twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen at Kings Fork High School. Lastly, through the use of creative scheduling with virtual learning, this past summer, I had a student who was enrolled in summer school for English twelve and government. The student was pregnant and on the first day of summer school, she went in labor. I was monitoring at the end of the first week of summer school the progress of students enrolled and noticed that twenty-four to forty-eight hours after she delivered, she began working in virtual learning. I am happy to report that she successfully completed both courses and now I will pass the mantle to Ms. Townsend. Thank you.
Good evening. As you can see from the slides, Mrs. Spruill's storytelling and Mrs. Duplain's data report, we have accomplished a lot. We have decreased dropout rate by three percent. We have increased GD recipients by seventy-five percent, and we have increased graduation rate to the five percent per high school. We had our first annual GED recognition ceremony, which turned out to be very successful. The GED students, the parents, the school board members, the principal, were very proud. Now I'm going to take a moment to tell you how we accomplished this rewarding work. We start with monitoring a system called Single Sign-On for the Web, which was referred to in the education field as the SSWS. The SSWS report is managed by Virginia Department of Education and based on the SSWS report, which states all of our dropouts and our unconfirmed students. The unconfirmed students are considered dropouts if we cannot confirm their location. Therefore, we must call every telephone number that's on record. We must email every email address, search Facebook, ask other students in the building if they know where these students are located, make home visits, even visit the neighbors. Our motto is whatever it takes. Once we find the students, we can offer creative scheduling into the GED program or traditional school settings, or allow the students to use virtual learning to work from home until they commit to the GED program or to traditional school setting. As we close, I want to thank the school board members and Dr. Whitney for investing in the graduation e-learning coaches. Without your support, we would not be celebrating the success accomplishments of tonight. I also like to thank Dr. Byrd and all our administrators as we continue to excel with your support and guidance to prepare our students for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Questions about board members. Anybody have questions? But this is certainly a great program. I happened to sit in on it when we were at the Virginia School Board Association's meeting and it was well presented then and is well presented now. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item under the superintendent's report is what we do traditionally this time of the year, introduction of all administrators. We usually divide that into two sessions, if not three. I'm going to call to the podium our Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services, Dr. Suzanne Rice.
Thank you, Dr. Whitney. Good evening, Board members. It is my pleasure to introduce to you the administrative teams of approximately half of the departments and schools this evening. Administrators, please stand as I call your names. We'll start with the Finance Department, Executive Director Wendy Forsman, Assistant Director Hilda Harmon, Supervisor Diane Wash, Supervisor of Purchasing Anthony Hines. From the Human Resources Department, Director Rodney Brown, and the Coordinator Diane Whiting. From Food and Nutrition Services, Director Brian Williams, Supervisor Robert Morris, and Operations Manager Angelo Mylan. From the Maintenance Department, Director Terry Napier, Operations Foreman Vernon Jackson, and Custodial Services Foreman Harold Downs. From the CCAP Program, Director Andre Skinner, and Assistant Director Connie Burgess. From Kings Fork High School, Principal Ronald Lee, Assistant Principal Elkie Boone, Assistant Principal Amy Dale, Assistant Principal Derek Bryant, and Dean of Students Frishawn Ely. From John F. Kennedy Middle School, Principal Brian Thrift, Assistant Principal Darrell Medley, and Assistant Principal Jeanetta Vaughn. From Turlington Woods, Principal Kenzie Bynum. From Creekside Elementary, Principal Tara Moore, Assistant Principal Candace Myrick, and Dean of Students Henry Brent. Elephants Fork Elementary, Principal Jessica Avery, Assistant Principal Garrick Rhodes, and Dean of Students Shaka Miller. From Macbin Junior Elementary, Principal David LaFave, and Assistant Principal Very Lessy Little. From Northern Shores Elementary, brand-new team there, Principal Lori White, and Assistant Principal Andrea Wilkins. From Oakland Elementary, Principal Tamisha Dabney, Assistant Principal Barbara Tid. And finally, from Pioneer Elementary, Principal Danielle Belton, and Assistant Principal Lisa Rath. I want to thank you all for your hard work and dedication to Suffolk Public Schools and I think we can all agree that they adopt the same model as the motto as the grad coaches, which is whatever it takes. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you to all of our administrators. Certainly a fine-looking group and perhaps the quietest I've ever seen you. Thank you for your work. Next, I'm going to call to the podium Ms. Diane Glover, our Director of Special Education, who's going to introduce our presenter for the CAC Annual Report. Mrs. Glover.
Thank you, Dr. Whitney. Good afternoon, School Board members. I'd like to ask Vivian Evatt to come to the podium. Ms. Evatt has served as our chairperson for the, I think, the last two years, maybe more. Okay, more. And she's actually going out and we're going to be bringing in this year Leslie Schiefer as our chairperson, but Ms. Evatt, of course, will continue to work with us closely. So we appreciate her hard work. She's going on page five, I believe it is. She's going to present to you the CAC Annual Report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All righty. As state mandated, the purpose of our committee is to advise Suffolk of the needs in the education of children with disabilities, participate in the development of priorities and strategies for meeting identified needs, submit periodic reports and recommendations regarding the education of children with disabilities, assist Suffolk in interpreting plans to the community for meeting special needs of children with disabilities for educational services, review the policies and procedures for the provision of special education and related services, and to participate in the review of Suffolk's annual plan. The majority of our voting membership consists of parents of students with disabilities currently receiving services in our division. We have one teacher voting member. Some of our members are community service providers. One consultant, our consultants include the Director and Supervisors of Special Education, the Parent Resource Center Facilitator, and a School Board Liaison. Our committee is governed by bylaws last revised December two thousand and nine. Subcommittee's are assigned as needed to address our goals. Our two thousand sixteen seventeen goals focused on disability awareness, transition, data and assessments, transportation, communication, resources, and disability policies. The committee meets six times a year on the third Wednesday bimonthly. Our meetings are held at Kings Fork Middle School, six-thirty to eight-thirty PM, and are open to the public. They are advertised in community publications. Our subcommittees meet as needed. A period of time is allotted for public comment and subsequent review during each scheduled meeting of the full committee. However, no public comment was made this year. The committee is tasked with raising public awareness of the impact of disabilities and resources available to assist parents and students. We are working with Suffolk to improve availability of the CAC brochure in schools and to our stakeholders. Beginning in October, which is Disability History and Awareness Month in Virginia, members of CAC helped implement disability awareness activities in schools. The committee also provides parents with an understanding of the functions of the local advisory committees. Members attended PTA meetings, school board meetings, and other SPS events to provide opportunities to discuss CAC. Our committee has mentored other local advisory committees in neighboring districts to share resources and help create more effective teams. A concern was voiced this year about staff members wearing shirts that read "celebrate autism." The parent felt that this type of statement was inappropriate. The concern was noted and staff will be discouraged from wearing such shirts in the future. The committee cosponsors the Disability Awareness and Resource Fair in Suffolk. However, no fair was held again this year. This event provides various resources for parents and caregivers of students receiving special ed services in Suffolk. At the two thousand fifteen event, CAC members and volunteers operated simulation centers designed to raise awareness among attendees by demonstrating challenges faced with impairments. We look forward to cosponsoring the Disability Awareness and Resource Fair this year. The Little Feet Meet, which is cosponsored by CAC and Special Olympics, was once again rained out. This event was scheduled to be held at Kings Fork High School on May eleventh with a rain date of May twelfth. Special Olympics provided equipment and training for the event. Elementary students receiving self-contained services were paired with typically developing peers to compete together in fun events. Due to the rain out, elementary schools held abbreviated versions of the event in their buildings to accommodate the students. This year, the Little Feet Meet is planned for the month of October with a rain date in spring. The committee monitors secondary transition services as budget constraints have severely impacted these services. Starting at age fourteen, transition services are addressed on the IEP. However, the committee recommends discussion of transition opportunities and resources prior to the age of fourteen. The committee continues to monitor the effect of the restructure of the Prudence Center on the vocational evaluations for students with special needs. This evaluation helps to determine a student's strengths and weaknesses in certain vocational areas and is crucial in developing their secondary transition services. CAC monitors testing data and assessments that impact students receiving special ed services in Suffolk. We review graduation and/or exit data and discuss accreditation issues within the district. This year, our committee assessed data concerning students who were found ineligible for services to ensure that the decision of ineligibility was not due to their family's ability to afford services outside of the school. This will be a continuing goal. The committee works on improving transportation for students with special needs. This year, an issue with transportation notices for extended school-year services was discussed with the Special Education Department. The CAC Chairperson will continue to serve as a liaison member of the Transportation Advisory Committee. The committee discussed methods to improve communication between parents of students receiving special ed services and schools. We are working with Suffolk to develop an email push list of special education information to parents. We are developing a survey to be distributed to stakeholders to determine who would like to be included on that list and inviting recommendations on how to better special ed services. We are also developing a Facebook page for CAC to allow for better communication with our stakeholders. The committee endeavors to improve resources available to parents of students receiving special ed services. We are developing recommendations for welcome packets containing necessary contact and service information. Our committee is also developing a list of recommendations for new materials to improve the Parent Resource Center. The committee will continue to monitor IEP software issues and their impact on our stakeholders this year. The IEP program provider Sign Guard was purchased by Power School. This may affect software support since Power School has a competing software. In addition, the state is considering a statewide IEP program. Each year, CAC reviews Suffolk's proposed budget for the next school year to consider any impact on special education services. While the decline in funding for certain special ed services over the last several years continues to be a concern to this committee, no public comment to the board was made this year. The committee reviews school policies impacting students receiving special ed services and their representation in the student and staff manuals. No issues or errors were found this past year. With approval, the two thousand seventeen eighteen CAC voting membership will be Leslie Schiefer, Chairperson, Louis Bagley, Vice Chairperson, Anne Dunn, Secretary, Deborah Bagley, Shamika Council, Regina Hall, Jenny Mayer, Teresa Jackson Pope, and Rebecca Shaw. That's four parents, two grandparents, one teacher, and two community service providers. At our July meeting, Ms. Glover stated that she would be making a recommendation to the school board to bring our nominations procedures in line with the VDOE policies for the state CAC. Our committee currently follows the guidelines established by the VDOE for local advisory committees. These procedures differ as the state and local advisory committees deal with different types of issues. Our committee does not believe that a change to our nomination procedures would be in the best interest of a strong and healthy CAC. This committee has been very effective over the years and has proven to be a model CAC to other local districts. To change these nomination procedures would not only be counterproductive to our committee but also would bring us out of conformance with VDOE guidelines for local advisory committees. CAC will establish specific committee goals at our upcoming meeting. Those goals will be presented to the board for your approval. CAC will continue to focus on how the following impacts students with disabilities: academic performance, graduation, dropout rates, and diploma options, secondary transition services, assessments, transportation, disability awareness and harassment, physical restraint and seclusion, the special education budget, and special education parent resources. In closing, the committee would like to thank Anne Dunn for continuing to serve as Secretary this past year in a non-voting capacity. The committee would also like to thank Saul Godinez for his service these past four years. He and I will be cycling off for one year as voting members due to bylaw term limits. We'd also like to thank the superintendent, board members, and the Special Education Department for their cooperation and assistance with our efforts this past year. We look forward to a new and productive year. And I'd also like to introduce Leslie Schiefer. Would you please stand up? She'll be our new chair for this year. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I'd like to make a comment if I could. Vivian, between you and Louis Bagley and Deborah Bagley, I do not know how to tell you how grateful that I am and other people should be for what you have done for the Special Education Department. The oversight that you've given, the organization that you have brought to this, and the knowledge, unbelievable. Thank you very, very, very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you all.
I have a question, a couple of them. You said that we didn't have the Resource Fair last year. Is there any reason why?
That's not my decision. I don't know. We cosponsored it. We cosponsored it in two thousand and fifteen, but we didn't have one the year after that or last year.
Is there anybody who doesn't? Oh, we didn't plan one and that's the only reason? Okay. And the other thing you made mention of, you assess data on ineligible students for services. Has that been an issue?
There was a concern brought to the committee by a parent that in a neighboring district it was an issue and they were coming to our district and wanted to be assured that it would not be an issue here. And so for that reason, we created a subcommittee to address that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Thank you.
I'd like to add one other thing. As a school board representative to the Special Ed Advisory Committee, I would like to second Ms. Everett's position that the CAC membership remains as it has been and that we continue to follow the state guidelines for local advisory committees.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evatt, for all that you've done over the years. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next item is the Career and Technical Education Advisory Council Annual Report. Dr. Latoya Harrison will present our presenter for that. Dr. Harrison.
Good evening Chairman Nebraska, board members, and Dr. Whitney. I have the great pleasure this evening of introducing someone who needs no introduction, our Coordinator for Career and Technical Education in our division, Ms. Gail Best. She's been with our division for forty years and has served for thirteen years as the Coordinator of Career and Technical Education and she's going to be coming up and also introducing members of the Advisory Council who will be also co-presenting with her this evening. Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
I am honored this evening to share with you a few highlights of the CTE student events that were held during the last school year and cosponsored by the Career and Technical Education Advisory Council. Two members of the CTE Advisory Council will present the report this evening. Mrs. Angela Turntine, Entrepreneur with Turntine Insurance Agency Incorporated, a five-year member of the Advisory Council, will be the first presenter, followed by Ms. Natasha Reed, Entrepreneur with Beauty and We, and a one-year member of the Advisory Council.
Good evening.
Evening.
It has been an absolute pleasure to serve on the CTE Advisory Council for the last five years. Not only am I an entrepreneur, I am also a mother of a participant from CTE. He's a recent graduate of Nanshun River High School, honor graduate, class of two thousand and seventeen. He now attends Norfolk State University and he's a business major with a concentration in entrepreneurship. While he was attending Nanshun River High School, he had the opportunity to participate in CTE courses. He took a course, Business Management, and he took a course in Entrepreneurship. So that's helped him tremendously. So I'm a huge supporter and advocate for CTE. The CTE Advisory Council meets monthly to share information on current business trends, technological demands, and workplace requirements. Student events are planned that will foster students' growth and help students connect what they learn in school with real-world applications, which are critical when they transition from high school to post-secondary education, military, apprenticeship programs, and/or employment, whether it be full-time or part-time. The membership of the CTE Advisory Council is comprised of a vast array of representatives from businesses and industries, post-secondary institutions, parents, retired educators, and community representatives who continue to have a vested interest in CTE. The next two slides list those companies that are represented. Beauty and We, my co-presenter, House Call Company, and Lux Stone Corporation were new to the Advisory Council last year. Also new to the Advisory Council were Suffolk Fire and Rescue and TE Cook Overton Funeral Home Incorporated. The first student event is the Student Conference. It's a professional student conference designed for ninth graders. Last year, one hundred and forty-seven ninth graders attended this event on November the seventeenth at the Hilton. We are excited about this year's conference with the theme "See Your Future: Begin With the End In Mind," as it marks the tenth-year anniversary for this event. I've had the pleasure of being a presenter at this event for four years. The conference is designed to introduce ninth-grade students to the Suffolk and Hampton Roads business communities as well as enhance the students' knowledge of expectations in the workplace as they enter high school and begin to identify a career focus. Appropriate dress is taught in all CTE classes and required of the students when they attend professional events sponsored by the CTE Advisory Council. Listed are the companies that participated last school year. The conference began with an opening session followed by four breakout sessions. to the Suffolk and Hampton Roads business communities as well as enhance the students' knowledge of expectations in the workplace as they enter high school and begin to identify a career focus. Appropriate dress is taught in all CTE classes and required of the students when they attend professional events sponsored by the CTE Advisory Council. Listed are the companies that participated last school year. The conference began with an opening session, followed by four breakout sessions and a lunching presentation. Students selected the breakout sessions they wanted to attend. Kevin Hughes, Director of Economic Development for the city, spoke on the topic Workplace Readiness: Skills Required by Business and Industry during the luncheon session. Students were treated to a plated meal, which they seemed to enjoy, especially the chocolate cake for dessert. A copy of last year's conference program booklet actually has been provided for you at your workstations. The second student event is the Non-Traditional Extravaganza. This event is designed for tenth and eleventh graders. The term "non-traditional" refers to occupations for which individuals from one gender or ethnic group comprise less than twenty-five percent of the workforce. The focus of this career event is to encourage students to think outside the box and not to feel locked in a career because of their gender or ethnicity. Students have the opportunity to interact in small settings with employees in non-traditional careers. Pictured here is Ms. Carol Branson representing the Virginia Ship Repair Association, an industry dominated by male employees. Last year, one hundred and ninety students attended this event on February the sixteenth. Twenty-two businesses were represented last year, including two new participants, Beauty and We and Community Electric Cooperative. We continue to see growth in the number of representatives from the business industry. Students have the opportunity to participate in three twelve-minute concurrent sessions during the non-traditional extravaganza. Now, Ms. Reed, Entrepreneur with Beauty and We, and a one-year member to the Advisory Council, will share additional information as we continue to highlight our CTE program.
Good evening. The third event planned by our Advisory Council is the Annual Career Expo, which is now in its twenty-seventh year. Students sharpen their interview skills through mock interviews with representatives from businesses and industries such as my own. Even though employment is not the goal of the event, students have reported that they are offered summer jobs as well as follow-up interviews. The next several slides list the names of thirty-five businesses represented by fifty employees who supported Career Expo. CFIT Studios and Corey and Associates Realty, LTD, were new participants last year and have expressed an interest in several student events for this school year. Kerma Medical Products Incorporated was also a new participant. A total of four hundred and forty-five students' interviews were conducted. Approximately ninety-eight percent of the business's representatives indicated that they would consider hiring some of the students they interviewed, and several indicated that they have in the past or will contract students for follow-up interviews. Also, new to the event was Suffolk Executive Offices. This year's Career Expo will be held on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, at the Hilton Garden Inn Suffolk Riverfront. All of the CTE Advisory Council student events are listed on the Save the Date flyers that have been placed at your workstations. I encourage you to mark your calendars tonight and plan to attend all or a portion of the events. Your attendance is always one of the highlights of the event. Naja Shannon was recognized for our CTE Student of the Year. Her Marketing Teacher shared that Naja exemplifies the following key traits in school and in her community: she has a strong work ethic, dedication, integrity, she has ambition, and persistence. These traits have allowed her to be a great student throughout her high school career and has helped her to show leadership on the basketball court and off the basketball court. Our CTE Teacher of the Year, or New Teacher of the Year, was Ms. Candace Cradle. Ms. Candace Cradle was recognized as the CTE New Teacher of the Year, and her principal shared her outgoing personality and excitement for teaching actually began the first day she walked into the building, and it has yet to slow down. Her enthusiasm, genuine concern for the students, and love for the subjects she teaches are exemplary. Mrs. Dawn Roundtree was recognized as the CTE Teacher of the Year, having earned this recognition previously in two thousand and nine and also two thousand and eleven. As a part of her personal teaching philosophy, Mrs. Roundtree shared that every person that walks into a classroom deserves the same amount of attention and respect as the person that follows. A teacher's job to show students the magic of education and how their coursework fits into their everyday and future lives. An outstanding teacher goes above and beyond the standard job description and ensures that every student is given an opportunity to excel their intended endeavors. At this time, Mrs. Best will continue forward to share industry credentialing information and a new venture at Kings Forks High School, which will conclude tonight's presentation.
Thank you. Back in two thousand and twelve, the General Assembly passed, and the Governor signed into law legislation to strengthen post-secondary education and workplace readiness opportunities for all students. The legislation states that requirements for a standard diploma shall include a requirement to earn a Career and Technical Education credential that has been approved by the Virginia State Board of Education. This past graduating class, the class of two thousand and seventeen, was the first graduating class required to meet this new requirement. There are approximately thirty industry credentials offered to students in our high schools, including CCAP. The Industry Credential State Report reflects the following, and you see it projected on the screen. Last year at Kings Forks High School, six hundred and two students earned an industry credential, with eighty-three percent of those students earning more than one. At Lakeland High School, five hundred and ten students earned an industry credential, with seventy-eight percent of those students earning more than one. And then, at Nansman River High School last year, nine hundred and eighteen students earned an industry credential with seventy-seven percent of those students earning more than one credential. This table shows the number of industry credentials achieved during the last five years. Last year, two thousand and thirty students earned an industry credential, and seventy-nine percent of those students earned more than one credential. This data and this chart also include CCAP. As you will note, that in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, the year the graduating class of two thousand and seventeen entered high school, one thousand six hundred and thirty-seven students earned an industry credential. I commend Suffolk Public Schools, CTE administrators, staff, and teachers for being proactive versus reactive in preparation for this new graduation requirement. I say this because industry credentialing data dates back as far as the two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten school year, when the class of two thousand and seventeen was in grade five. That year, two hundred and forty-six students earned an industry credential, with this number increasing over the past eight years, as well as the number of opportunities for students to earn an industry credential. As I bring the presentation to closure, kudos to Kings Forks High School for a successful Bayport Student Run Credit Union under the leadership of Mrs. Cynthia Crandall, CTE teacher. The Bayport Student Credit Union opened on October the third, two thousand and sixteen. By the end of the school year, thirty-three student accounts were opened, and eight adult accounts were opened. There were four student workers who were officially employed by Bayport Credit Union as tellers. They opened and operated the business each day. Some of their job duties included opening accounts, processing deposits and withdrawals, assisting members with account setup and maintenance, promoting the credit union, communicating effectively with employees at the main branch, and providing great customer service. One student has applied to work at the Main Street branch to help pay her way through college. Another student is in college and is planning to apply to work during the summer. This is just a tip of the iceberg of the success of this first-time venture and how it positively impacted the Kings Forks High School Bulldog family. A grand reopening is being planned to kick off for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen Bayport Student Run Credit Union. Thank you for your continued support of Career and Technical Education. Do you have any questions?
Yes. Could you explain what the industry credentials are for our slave people who don't understand that?
An industry credential is an assessment that our students take that is actually written and administered in the business world. They address national business standards. Some of the assessments that we give, we have one that's in customer service and sales that we give to our students that are in our marketing program. Any industry can offer that same exact assessment to their employees. So these are tests that are not written by educators. They are written by people in the business world and used in the business sector.
Yes. Questions?
I had one thing to say. I want to thank these two people for taking their time to serve on that Advisory Council, and it sounds like you are doing a great job. And I've been to many of those events at the Hilton that y'all have sponsored, and they are very beneficial for our students. And I commend you for all the attempts and future endeavors that you have. And I know Ms. Best has worked diligently on these things. Thank you so much.
Welcome. Thank you. You're welcome.
I too would like to thank Ms. Best and the CTE Advisory Committee. Thank you for your work. We appreciate it very much. Next on the agenda, I'm going to call Dr. Latoya Harrison again to present to you an accreditation update. As you well know, the state did present official scores and accreditation ratings yesterday, but we want to share with you and our viewing public exactly where we are as far as progress is concerned. Dr. Harrison?
Thank you, and good evening again. As Dr. Whitney just shared, I am going to be presenting a brief update on our accreditation results for the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen school year. So currently, we have, as you see listed on page thirty-five in your books, we have thirteen schools that are fully accredited. And I'm pleased to announce that Nansman Parkway Elementary School and Forest Glen Middle School were added to that number this year. They were partially accredited last year and made tremendous progress and now are fully accredited. And we applaud them on their achievements. Schools that are, whose status is currently to be determined are Elephants Fork Elementary School and Kings Fork Middle School. These are schools that have also made progress and will be recommended for partially accredited status, and that is going to be presented to the State Board of Education later this month by the state superintendent. And they've been included on a list of other schools throughout the state that made tremendous progress and are being recommended for partially accredited reconstituted status. And again, their status as of today is to be determined, and we will find out at a later time if that is going to be approved. We also have three schools that are denied accreditation: Booker T. Washington Elementary School, Macbin Junior Elementary, and John F. Kennedy Middle School. John F. Kennedy has been added to that list for this year. They were partially accredited last year. Booker T. and Macbin were denied accreditation last year, but they have made progress. For example, in the area of English, Macbin has gone from, they went from sixty-two to sixty-seven percent in English. They went from fifty-nine to seventy percent in math, so they have made progress, but their status has not changed as of yet. As you are aware, in order for schools to be fully accredited, they have to meet the benchmark of at least seventy percent in science, history, and math, and seventy-five percent in English. But they are a school on the move and are making progress. Booker T. Washington also made progress, and they moved from sixty-one to sixty-six percent in English, and also moved from sixty to sixty-one in math, and from sixty-five to seventy in science. So again, they're making progress, but we look forward to working with them and seeing much more progress as we move forward. And we will continue to support them in that effort.
If I could just add, while it is very exciting to see schools added to the fully accredited, and excited also to see that we have two schools that we're pretty confident that will be partially accredited, reconstituted. Of course, we'll have to wait and see exactly what the State Board does. As we look at the three schools that are denied accreditation, while they may not have met the benchmark, I'm pleased to see that they have made progress, and teachers and students are working hard in those buildings. I think that it's common knowledge that when you look at the three schools that are listed there, we know that those have been schools that have had some challenges over the last several years. We've done a number of interventions, remedial-type programs, and other staff changes in some instances as well. I think it's time for us to explore some other alternatives, and I've asked Dr. Harrison to share with you one of the possible alternatives that we want to explore that we think might be something that we can pilot in maybe one or two of the schools. But I just wanted to give a brief overview of what we're talking about: opportunity culture within these buildings. Dr. Harrison?
Thank you, Dr. Whitney. As Dr. Whitney shared, this is, opportunity culture is a model that we are currently exploring, and I wanted to share a brief overview of this model with you this evening. Opportunity culture is really an effort to recruit and retain exemplary teachers in our highest-needs schools. And so, this model entails redesigning schools with specific models within the school building that allow our best and most experienced teachers to remain in the classroom while earning more and reaching significantly more students at the same time. And why is this important? We know that great teaching matters tremendously for our students. We all know that for many of our students, the achievement gap begins well before they even enter a school building. And what does it take to catch a student up who starts school far behind many of their peers? And it typically takes not just good teaching, but exceptional teaching. And so, when you look at this particular slide, and I apologize, this is not in your books, and I'll make this available to you later. But a good teacher, as research shows, typically will make gains in the average of about a year's worth of learning in a year's time for most of their students, which is really great for most students, if a student starts that year on target. But for our students who may start two years behind, if you look at this particular chart, it shows that after eight years of good teaching, that student is still two years behind. That gap will not have closed. But with excellent teaching, research shows that students can gain about a year and a half of learning in a year's time. And so, if you take those same two students who both may enter school behind their peers, and you have one with a really good, solid teacher, and one with an exceptional teacher, that student with exceptional teaching for eight consecutive years not only would catch up, but would also be two years ahead after eight years from that experience. And so, that really is the crux of this model, is an effort to recruit and retain exemplary teachers in our highest-needs schools so that they not only expand their impact on students, but that they also become coaches and role models and mentors for even our good teachers, so that all teachers are raised to the level of more exemplary status within our schools. And so, we know we have good teachers, but our goal is to always improve in our work. So currently, when you think about the career paths for our teachers, we have what's considered an up-and-out model. When you think about, for our teachers throughout, and this is not just a Suffolk Public Schools thing, this is nationally, for a teacher to really advance their career or to increase their income, teachers typically have to move from the classroom, out of the classroom, into either an administrative position or to a curriculum specialist or a coaching type of role, or if they just want to increase their income, perhaps moving outside of the district to another division where perhaps they can increase their salary. But our goal is that teachers, in order to- But our goal is that teachers, in order to advance their careers, that they not necessarily just move, um, up and out, but that they can move up and maintain a role in the classroom where they can continue to have an impact. So in opportunity culture, schools and districts, uh, our teachers can not only increase their impact and advance their careers and earn more by extending their reach directly to more students, playing an increasingly advanced role on school teams, and also leading teams of teachers and other staff members to reach more students. But again, they get to do all of these things while also staying in the classroom and reaching, um, and reaching more students and having a direct impact on students. So just to give you an example of what this could look like, in the opportunity culture they have, and I'm giving a very brief overview this evening, it's actually, there's, there are so many different models that they offer in this particular, um, initiative, but particularly the multi-classroom leader is one role, for example, where a teacher might teach while also leading, uh, teaching team, and they would also perhaps serve, it is a high, as a, in a hybrid role where they have some teaching responsibilities, but also would have time to coach, co-teach, or co-plan with other teachers. They would also be responsible for not just the results of one particular classroom, but as the multi-classroom leader over perhaps an entire grade level or two grade levels, they would be responsible for the results of all the t, students on that particular team. And this person, as the leader of that particular grade level, uh, would also spend a lot of their time coaching teachers and helping teachers plan their time and tailoring the talents of the members of the team so that teachers who may have a special talent in teaching English might specialize in just teaching English on the elementary level as opposed to teaching every subject, uh, every subject on that level. And so those are some of the types of things that as a multi-classroom leader, that someone in this role might have, uh, a hand in influencing or leading some of those decisions along with, uh, the principal, of course. The principal obviously would oversee all of that. And while doing that, this person also would earn more income for the expanded role that they would have in schools. And obviously, what matters most is the benefit for students. Students who experience excellent teaching, as, as I shared in the very first, uh, slide, is, the benefit is that they experience excellent teaching more consistently and as a result, it improves their, their performance. So more teachers in this particular model will be available to provide more students with personalized learning approaches and those, the types of approaches that we see have the most impact on students today. Also, students would see the more effective teaching they have, obviously, the more opportunity there will be for us to close and at least narrow achievement gaps. In addition, when you have the power, leverage the power of teams with a multi-classroom leader or other roles that are presented in the opportunity culture model, these teams of teachers and assistants have the chance to pay more attention, not just to the academic needs of students, but we know in our high need schools, our students also present many other needs that need, that we have to address, uh, in our buildings. So their social, emotional needs and time management. And for example, if a student doesn't connect with one teacher on the team, they can work collaboratively to find out how someone on that team can connect with that student and help that student achieve and help meet some of the social needs that the student might present. So that's again, just a brief overview of this particular initiative. It is, uh, an initiative out of, uh, North Carolina, the Public Impact Organization, um, started this several years ago, and it's being implemented in school divisions throughout, throughout the country.
Rachel, do you anticipate this going to be implemented in right offhand?
Our hope would be for next school year, and again, this is something that we're in the initial stages of exploring, and I thought it would be, um, worth sharing tonight, at least, just so that you have an idea of some of the types of models that we are researching and exploring. And we did have an opportunity to visit last year, visit several schools in North Carolina that are implementing this model.
What grades were, were, what grades was it used in?
We visited elementary schools and also a K-eight school, but it's all, it's being implemented K-12 in this particular division that we visited.
I think our interest is to look at, um, some of our, um, our schools on the move, elementary schools that are on the move, and, um, particularly Mac Ben and Booker T. Washington. Because when you look at this program or this model, the, the thrust of it, for the most part, is that it provides an opportunity for teachers as far as a career ladder, but it also provides students to receive instruction from those who have been identified as true master teachers. And I say that cautiously because it's not to suggest that, uh, teachers are so, some are worse than others, but it's a matter of some have really perfected the craft, if you will. And it's a matter of letting them maintain in the classroom. Oftentimes, when we bring names to you as far as, uh, teachers being promoted to, whether it's a central office position or administration position, we're excited for that person, but we're also a little disappointed because they're leaving a classroom. And we know, uh, the person who has the most impact on students is the classroom teacher. So this person may be reaching and teaching more than his or her twenty-five students because they're going to be actually working with students, but also working directly with teachers as well.
Are you thinking, for example, let's say, um, in Booker T. Washington, are you thinking of, let's say, for example, you have four third-grade teachers. Are you thinking of this excellent teacher being, say, called a lead teacher, which is a fifth teacher, but who is like the, uh, chairperson of the third grade and would coordinate the learning in that grade, plus go in and model teach and co-teach in that grade? Is that sort of what you're saying?
That, it's, it's pretty similar to that, and it's a little more nuanced and, um, probably some of the details that we would get into in future discussions, but essentially that, that is kind of what it would look like. That person would oversee that grade level, would have a lot of leadership, uh, responsibilities, but would still go into the classroom and teach. And primarily, you know, there are a lot of ways that you can strategically target, uh, the, the, um, work of that particular person so that if it's, for example, the multi-classroom leader has a specific expertise in teaching reading, then it might be that, that that particular person goes into classrooms and maybe pulls the most struggling students on that grade level and teaches reading directly to those students and also coaches other teachers in reading.
And, and, uh, one other question. And are you thinking of, uh, hiring from within? In other words, choosing from Suffolk excellent teachers? That's where you're gonna?
That would be the goal, definitely. That would be the goal because they're familiar with the Suffolk, uh, curriculum pacing.
And you're familiar with them?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Like team teaching with it.
It's so many models that it's hard to say exactly which model we would implement. Uh, uh, like I said, this is the early stages of us exploring it. Uh, but it would be, in some instances, it might be a day of team teaching or co-teaching, or it might be a day of, I'm going to pull a small group. Um, it doesn't necessarily have to be an additional role, additional position. It could be, out of those three teachers, we're going to divide students up for this time period, um, and have the, um, the multi-level teacher work with this particular group while the others work with the other remaining students type of thing. So it's not, it's not just an additional position that works as a grade level chair or a coach. This person will be working directly with t, students, but they'll also be coaching. It's a unique position. I think it would be a position that we would need a commitment from, uh, the person who receives this position as far as staying there and building, uh, some continuity among the staff and just committing to the program or the model itself.
You mean, like, I'm not going to just do this one year. I'm going to stick with it. That's what you're talking about?
That would be ideal.
I have a question about the policy. I know that, um, Dr. Staples talked to us at V S B A about the policy, the rating of schools, the testing, how we were going to do it, and that growth was going to be the emphasis instead of everybody's got to make seventy-five on the test, we're going to look at growth. Has that been implemented or is that still in discussion?
The new accreditation process is still under discussion. I think, uh, October sixth is the final day that public can give input. But they are looking at more so a growth model. But they're also looking at more so not identifying a school as either denied or fully accredited. They're looking at the particular area, for example, student attendance, uh, absenteeism, um, it may be academic achievement, it may be, um, involvement, parental involvement and things of that nature. So I, I think that's a good thing because it, it eliminates the labeling of schools. If there's an area that needs attention, then let's address that particular area. For example, some of the schools that are, are, are on the list as far as denied, it may be they're denied in English.
Right.
Not across the board. It's not a failing school. It's a matter of that school didn't meet the benchmark in that particular content area or whatever area it may be. Last item on the reports by the superintendent, you can find on page thirty-six, which is, of course, our calendar of special events. As you can see, we do have Disability Awareness Month in October, Suffolk Peanut Fest, where many of our students will be participating, National School Lunch Week, Grandparents Week, uh, in October, National School Bus Safety Week, and Bus Driver and Aid Appreciation Day, October eighteenth. We have scheduled our State of the Schools Breakfast and Learning Fair on November fourteenth. That concludes the superintendent's report. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Well, board members, please look at the consent agenda, think, see if any items need to be moved or changed. These are our action items, we'll have to vote on each one. Can we take them collectively?
I'd like to move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
We have no unfinished business, so we'll go to new business. Capital Improvement Plan for two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-eight. Dr. Whitney?
Yes, as we do each year, we prepare a capital improvement plan for the next ten years. I'm going to call to the podium, Mr. Terry Napier, our Director of Plant and Facilities, to share with you our capital improvement, uh, proposal, which you can find on page thirty-seven.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, as we do every year, and as you know, we bring you a proposal, a capital improvement plan or a CIP proposal, which outlines projects that we are suggesting that you recommend for funding over the course of the next ten years. I will remind you, and I'm sure you already know, uh, even though we're working this out over ten years, it is funded yearly, so it is always subject to change. Uh, if you look on page thirty-seven of your board book, you have a copy of the proposal. We're going to run through the projects real quickly. Uh, at the end, if you have any questions, we can certainly answer them. Uh, beginning at the top of the page, this is the Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal years eighteen, nineteen through twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Uh, there are three projects listed there. Before we get to the new projects, uh, the new, and they're just there for informational purposes, having been funded in prior years. Uh, the new middle school, which is currently under construction, the new Norland Elementary School, which is also currently under construction, and the operations facility at Mount Zion, which is phase one. Now, that is not under construction at this point, uh, but we have selected an architect, so we expect to be moving forward with that very shortly. So those three projects have been funded in previous years. Beginning with project number one, there are twelve. They are listed in priority order, one through twelve. And we're going to begin with number one. Number one is a capital replacement. Uh, this includes HVAC, roof systems, stormwater drain, and infrastructure needs. As you can see there, there is a change to that. In previous capital improvement plans, we recommended that one million per funding year be provided. Uh, we have increased that to two-point-five million per year, uh, as the current proposal. And the reason for that is, we knew we had HVAC problems in the past, uh, we have been working on those HVAC replacements, uh, but we also have reached a point in time where we are now experiencing roof problems. Uh, we have roofs that no longer have warranties on them, so they become our responsibility at that point. So we have projects that we are seeing now that were not necessarily included in previous CIPs, but we think it's a good idea to go ahead and put that out there and put it in there, uh, beginning with this cycle. So you see a jump from one million to two-point-five. And then that two-point-five runs out for the entire, uh, ten years. Project number two, hazardous materials management, uh, that is a line that has been in there in all previous CIPs. That is seventy-five thousand dollars per year, and that is for us to deal with primarily asbestos and mold-related situations.
Have you ever used that much?
Uh, we do, we haven't used all of that, uh, in the last few years, but we do use a considerable amount of it. Uh, the problem with those two things is you never know when that problem is going to arise, and when it does, you never know how much it's going to cost. Uh, so we keep that money in there. And it does carry over from year to year.
New schools being built without these hazardous materials?
Uh, all schools since nineteen ninety have been built without asbestos, yes. So there, there will be none. Line number three, Northern Shores Elementary. This is an addition of ten classrooms. As you know, they are experiencing some overcrowding in Northern Shores. Uh, this is how we suggest, uh, going about remedying that problem. So it would add ten classrooms, uh, approximately two hundred to two-hundred-and-twenty-five or so students, uh, would fit into those classrooms. So, uh, rather than, you know, going the route of, uh, Northern Shores is, it's not a young school, but it's not old either. Uh, so we feel like just adding on to that building would help a great deal with that situation that they're in now.
Those of you who were on the board, you may remember, we chose that design that would allow us to actually build, uh, add on to it, and we have the land, so we feel very comfortable with that.
We could do that with students in the school. Uh, it's not ideal, uh, but it's done quite frequently and, and we think we could pull that off without any problems.
What's the difference between, um, making that addition and just adding mobile units? I mean, I know that's a bad word to say. I was just curious if, uh, if it came down to it?
Mobile, mobile units in my mind, and I don't know how many of, uh, my colleagues I speak for, are a problem from the outset.
Yes, I mean, I know they are. I just meant, is, are they cheaper than adding an addition?
Uh, I don't know that it's cheaper, but, uh, an addition is a permanent solution. Mobile units are temporary.
Right.
Or they're meant to be temporary.
Like John Yates.
Yeah.
Yes, and Northern Shores already has a community of mobile units.
It has, I believe it's seven.
I'm not suggesting mobile units. I was just thinking, if we didn't get the money, is that what we would do?
Uh, mobile units are always an option. They're not a good option in my mind.
No.
Uh, but they are an option. Project number four, the operations facility at Mount Zion, phase two. And if you recall, up here, phase one has been funded. Phase one is where we are going to take the existing building at Mount Zion, we're going to demolish it. We are going to build an alternate building in its place, which would primarily be office space, uh, and workspace for food services. Eventually, when we get phase two, the facilities department would move there as well. Print shop will be in there, textbooks, archived records, all of those support departments, with the exception of transportation, would be housed in that building, uh, that we're planning to build on the site of Mount Zion currently. That part of it has been funded. There's a second phase to this where we have to build a warehouse behind it, we have to put shop space back there for, uh, the tradespeople to work out of, and we have to have a place for trucks to go in and out. So there's, there's phase one, one and phase two. Phase one has been built. The facilities department cannot move there until phase two is also completed. So we have that listed as project number four. Uh, we would like to fund that. And if you have any questions about the amounts on your sheets, just, just speak up. But we're looking at about eleven-point-three million dollars to finish that project out, and we would like it to be finished by twenty-twenty. So we'll see, we'll see how that goes with city council, but we have, uh, we do have funding for phase one.
Phase one on the same footprint as, uh, as the building now?
Yes, it will be in the same location. We're not going to reuse the slab, we're going to pull that up and, and.
Start over again.
But it is going to be in the same location. Project number five, downtown six-hundred-student elementary school. And this is a new project that was not on the previous CIPs, and I will let Dr. Whitney speak to that.
Um, you, you may recall, we've had some discussion about, um, the possibility of adding a, uh, proposing a downtown elementary school. While I do have some reservations because of the, um, potential lack of diversity at that particular school, but as we present it tonight, um, I feel as though we're going to have to make certain that we do something different at that school, uh, or any school that lacks diversity. Uh, because what research has shown is that students thrive better in diverse environments, whether we're talking socio-economically and/or racially. better in diverse environments, whether we're talking socio-economically and/or racially. But it is included here. The goal behind it would be to move students closer to home-based school, where they're not having to travel as much, and eliminate mobile units at some of the schools that are housing students from the downtown area currently.
So I have a question. So Booker T. is how far from where we're talking about placing ?
We haven't selected a location. We have not even begun to.
So if we talk downtown Suffolk?
Yes.
How far is it from existing structures that we have? And do we have plans for what we would do? Who would attend that school? Let me finish, because I need to know.
Quite naturally, it would be the students who are housed at downtown. A large percentage of our students come from the downtown area. So what it would do is eliminate some of the busing to some of our schools, such as Pioneer. It would eliminate some of the students bussed out from downtown to Elephant's Fork, Macben possibly, as well as?
Hill Point?
Hill Point.
Nesman Parkway.
Nesman Parkway as well. So we'd look at attempting to pull some of those students down, back, and remain in the community. But again, it depends on the actual location. But again, this is something that several of you have talked about, and we've included it up here this year.
How are you going to achieve the diversity issue?
That's why I said I had some reservations about it.
Right. Do you have any?
We haven't thought about that yet.
Yeah, I think that would have to be thought about.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah. It's a great idea, but, I mean, it's a great idea, but I think that our goal should also be to put schools in places that are already diverse, so that you can have a neighborhood school and a diverse school at the same time. And I don't know if that could be achieved by putting a school downtown Suffolk. I mean, you know, it's a good thought, but.
Downtown Suffolk doesn't have a school. It hadn't had a school in three years.
I know it doesn't have a school, but I don't think that just because it doesn't have a school, that we just have to put a school there, just like we didn't have a school in the southern end, and we put Pioneer there. Whereas that, if we had to think about that again, maybe that school should have been in a more diverse area. That's my only point.
Pioneer is in a diverse area.
Sort of. But I would say that one of the most diverse areas is, say, where Hill Point is. I mean, that's pretty good. But I'm just saying that I think we should get our heads out of the clouds and put schools in areas where we don't have to bus kids in, where we already have a diverse area. That's all.
One point there. Mrs. Bouchard makes a very good point. And one thing that that would allow us to do by having a school downtown is eliminate a great many of the mobile units that are at the schools that we currently bus them to. Most of those schools have mobile units now. If we had this school where we could keep them closer to home, one of the upsides to that would be that we wouldn't need those mobile units anymore.
There is a good side here.
Where are you going to get the diversity?
Having worked in a school that had no diversity during my career, I would proceed very gingerly on that. It's not an easy situation.
Project number six, the Excel Academy at Driver. As you know, when the new Forest Glanor opens, we will be closing Driver Elementary School as an elementary school. At that point, we have decided to use it as an alternative school.
If I may add to that, you may recall, we did a presentation during our retreat regarding looking at this school as a personalized learning academy, where students who perhaps have been retained once, or more than once, would perhaps receive instruction in a different manner, a manner that meets their needs, but also in a smaller environment with less distractions.
And we are asking that four million dollars be funded, and that is primarily for HVAC replacement at the current building. We are in need of sewer repairs there. We are in need of roofwork there. And then we need some bathroom updates, depending on what age group eventually winds up in that building. But there are some things that we would need to do there, we believe, prior to opening it up as the Excel Academy. Project number seven, the Prudence Center. As you know, we now own the Prudence Center. Without the help of any of our neighbors, we are recommending that some renovations be made to that facility, primarily HVAC and other building systems, plumbing, electrical. There are some things that we would like to do there. We weren't able to do them this year. We can operate it the way it is, but we feel like it is in need. It's an older building, too. It is in need of some updates, so we are suggesting two million dollars for that work.
That's for C cap?
Yes.
Not getting a dollar from any of them anymore.
Project number eight, John F. Kennedy Middle School. This is a replacement school. As you recall, last year, we essentially abandoned the idea of renovating middle schools, simply because the logistics of it, we have no way to do that. It's very difficult to renovate an entire building. We have nowhere to send those students while we do that, and it does take time to do that. We feel like we would be much better served, and it actually isn't much more expensive to go ahead and build a new building versus renovating an older building. So at this point in time, we feel it's in our best interest, rather than do replacement schools, or rather than do renovations, to do replacement schools. So John F. Kennedy is project number eight. We're proposing that funding start for that in two thousand twenty-one. And you can see the numbers off to the side there. It's forty-three million total. Number nine, Forest Glen Middle School. Same thing. We would acquire new land, or we would use the land that Forest Glen is sitting on now, and just build a new facility there. John Yates Middle School is project number ten. Same idea. Rather than doing any type of renovation, we acquire land, or use the same land, if we can do that, if there's enough of it, and just build a new building. Project number eleven, Kilby Shores. That is also a replacement school. And some of these are way out. That's two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, where we are suggesting that they begin with five million dollars worth of funding that year. And then project number twelve is the New Northern High School, and it is way out there in two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven. So those are the twelve projects that we, at this time, that we're recommending, that you take a look at. This is certainly just a proposal. You have the draft copy, and it definitely is not too late to make adjustments to this if you need to. But are there any questions as to what we are proposing?
Yeah, I looked at the future growth of the city as to where we're going to build new schools as well.
We always look at that. And I think with the middle school replacements, those zones are already there, and I don't think it would be necessary for us, unless we had a reason to do so, to necessarily change those zones. What we're doing is taking aging buildings out of our inventory and replacing them with newer buildings. So the populations that are there would still be there.
I'm thinking about new high schools. Nansman River, for example, that new high school, that high school would be out of existence in ten years.
Right.
As far as people going to it.
And given that it's ten years out, I think we have a lot of time between now and then to see what happens with the population there. What the city likes to say to us, and it's true, anything after five years is essentially a placeholder. And we're saying, you know, after a certain amount of time, we may need that. We may come back to you and say, we don't need that. We need something else.
Like predicting a hurricane seven days out.
It's very much like predicting, yeah. It's sort of like that. So we don't want to go into it saying we're not going to need something that we think we may need. So it's better for us to put it on here as we get closer to that time. Ten years is an eternity. So as we get closer to that time, we can see what's happening as far as student populations, and we can make a more informed decision at that point. But right now, we're thinking, there is a possibility that we can need one. So we have it essentially in there as a placeholder.
Well, I guess I'm looking at maybe the priorities, and maybe I'm confused, because I'm looking at this new school. And then I'm looking at our middle schools that were built in nineteen sixty-five.
Right.
And I know they have to have needs that would seem to me, just from our experiences with patching up some of these schools and the things behind these schools, they would seem to be more of a priority than the one that we're talking about building somewhere close to here. I'm just, I'm sort of confused. We've discussed it, but I'm saying, on a priority list, when I think about Forest Glen, when I think about John Yates, when I think about John F. Kennedy, and then I see them behind
Right.
a new school built downtown, that we don't even know. There are a lot of, we don't knows about that. So I guess the priorities are concerned for me.
I think you have a very good point. I think this, I think what you're talking about is that downtown school. But again, Ms. Byram was saying, for example, if they built a housing development out near the airport, that would be a very good place to put a school that would automatically be diverse. And I don't know, this, I agree with you, that that's the only item on here that I think is unrealistic, that downtown school.
Again, this is, this is the time, if this needs to be removed, the downtown school, we can do that. If it needs to be eliminated completely, or moved down behind certain things, we can certainly do that as well. Is that your pleasure?
Well, I guess, like you said, I'm concerned, because I don't see it as a priority over and above. I'm looking at our middle school stock from nineteen sixty-five and thinking that it just appears to me that that, those things would be a priority and not so far out before we look at building a school. Is Booker T. full?
No.
Okay.
Booker T. is not full.
Booker T. is not full. And so I'm thinking, I'm sitting in downtown, so I'm trying to figure out where, what we're talking about. And also, if that could be moved out, and some of the other things moved in, because the other things appear to me to be more crucial than, than that at this time.
And more realistic.
And more realistic than that at this time. Because I think that, that our, we've got to look at buildings and structures, and I understand we could pull some children in from some of the schools that exist, and I understand that we might reduce busing a bit if we create that school. But we're just talking about six-hundred kids out of fourteen thousand kids. And like I said, I'm looking at the age of our middle schools, and just thinking, just looking at the age of these three middle schools, Kennedy, Glen, and Yates, I cannot see, I don't see the reasoning behind moving the other up as a priority over. Now, it might be in the ten-year plan, because we don't know what's going to happen in the area. I realize that there are buildings and whatever, building projects going on over the city, but I just don't see that as a priority over and above these things that we know are staring us in the face.
I'd like to ask, how critical is it to maintain, not maintain, but to put the middle schools on the program up closer to the center?
Well, they are old schools.
Right.
They were built in nineteen sixty-five.
What's the cost of going to maintain them, going to be in the future? Do you have any idea?
I have no idea, because we don't know what's going to go wrong with them. It is not cheap. They are in need of, with the exception of John Yates, they all need HVAC replacements, all of them, including John Yates, need roof replacements. So we have all of these things. There are building envelope problems as far as the windows. They're all single-pane windows. The buildings aren't efficient to run. They were built in nineteen sixty-five. So the quicker we can replace those, the better off we are. But under the current proposal, we are suggesting that funding begin for John F. Kennedy in two thousand twenty, which is essentially two years from now.
I think, and I agree with many of the comments, as I said before, I included the downtown six-hundred-student elementary with reservations. I do agree that it's a matter of priorities. While it may, if we were to move in that direction, eliminate mobile units at other schools, we do have schools that are much older. So it's a matter of mobile units or getting those older schools replaced, and it's a matter of prioritizing. So again...
I think it's something we should look at. I agree with that. Let's look at that and not vote on this now.
Well, we have to submit something to the city, remember, by the twenty-second, I believe, Ms. Forsman?
The twenty-first month.
Yes, the twenty-second of this month.
Well, if we do have to do that, and we do need to vote on it tonight, then, can I make a motion?
Certainly.
I mean, I would like to move that we move the downtown six-hundred-student elementary school project. I don't know where to put it, but maybe instead of six, maybe eleven or something like that. I don't know. Maybe not way out, but I don't, maybe I could get some help with this.
Maybe I'm thinking way out.
Not way out.
I'm thinking way out, because you're telling me that we have, that there are other schools that are older than this, that have other, other things that we need to do. And I just think that we need to look at.
Okay, so put it after the, after the middle schools.
That would be a great idea. And I think, you know, we could do a cat, we could do all sorts of interesting things. And I don't know that it would help with busing if we did some kind of special school for STEM or whatever. We could do that to at least help with diversity. But the issue would be, it still wouldn't help with busing. It would just be there. So I'm thinking that maybe we need to move some of these other projects that we know that are more critical closer.
Okay, so here's the, here's the motion then. I move that we take the downtown student elementary school and put it after the John Yates Middle School, and then adjust the number, priority numbers accordingly.
Or move it to number eleven after John Yates.
Yes, sir.
Which may move its number as well.
Yes, sir.
That's the motion.
That would come before Kilby Shores?
Well...
Yes.
Yes.
After John Yates.
After John Yates.
Mm-hmm.
And move the others up accordingly. And then we can always change our minds next year.
How old is Kilby Shores?
Nineteen seventy-eight.
Okay.
Yeah, but not as old as John Yates.
Oh, it's sixty-five. The middle schools, that's what caught my attention, the dates on the middle school.
Kilby Shores was built when Nesman Parkway was built.
Yes.
Keep in mind, this is a one-year funded plan.
Right.
If at some point in two years, you see that we need that elementary school, we put it back in here.
That's what I said. I said, we're just, this is, I said, we can change your minds next year.
Change your minds next week.
Why can't it be twelve?
Huh?
Why can't we move it under Kilby Shores?
If you want to. I mean...
I mean, can we?
I will, I will move my motion to move that after Kilby Shores.
Well, I'd be opposed to that. I think that we're going too far with this situation, because I think that we've neglected the downtown area for a long enough time. I think we need to look at the students that live there, and there's no need to keep moving them out and putting them on the side.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm not suggesting, I know what you're saying, Dr. DeBranski. It's not a matter of pushing the downtown kids away. It's a matter of, it's a matter of being realistic about, I mean, if we just placed a new school in the middle of downtown, then I don't think we're justifying, we're not justifying our desire to have diverse populations in our schools without unnecessary busing. And once again, I'm only saying this because next year, if we can figure out a reason that would justify what you're saying, I mean, just because they deserve a school downtown, doesn't mean that it is a realistic option right at this moment. That's my only point. I'm not saying they don't deserve it, or that, but, well, anyway.
I'd like for all of them to be new schools. I'd like for all the kids to get new schools.
Yes.
But right now, I don't know. I think it would be, and it's not which kids deserve it, it's just looking at our stock of schools and justifying why we would do that, other than having to bus them, because in order to make them diverse, you're going to have to bus to make them diverse, you're going to have to bus some students in. So we're not saving on busing, because while we're saving on taking the trailers out from behind the schools, in order for the school to be diverse, we're going to have to bus some students into the schools, or make it a special school, as some have suggested, that the students who live in the neighborhood won't get to go to any wave, which won't make any sense to me. But I'm just thinking that when I look at our school stock and the fact that we don't really have a, a plan, a need right now for it, that if we look at our school stock, I didn't know whether, when I saw this, I thought, well, is this going to replace Booker T., or is it going to replace some of the schools that are close to this area? If it's going to replace them, then we're talking about taking, getting rid of an old school and putting a new school in its place. But if it's not going to replace them, then I think it needs to go behind some of these other schools that are in dire need of some major changes.
One part we, we have to look at here, I'm looking at 2020, 20, now, the downtown area, Booker T., when I was a kid, I looked at Booker T. as being the downtown school.
I did too.
Uh, but 20, in the year 20, 2020, we're going to have redistricting, and who knows what is going to be Suffolk Borough, or what is going to be Whelleville Borough, and these are, uh, these are Cypress Borough. These are the three boroughs that we are going to be addressing. Cypress Borough, Whelleville Borough, and Suffolk Borough. The Whelleville Borough, right now, I think Booker T. is in the Whelleville Borough. Am I right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's correct.
Uh, so 2020, Booker T. may be in the Suffolk Borough, back in the Suffolk Borough, depends on the growth, and depends upon what this council does in redistricting. If they keep, if they keep the eight, if they keep the seven boroughs, I mean, seven boroughs in place, uh, it may, Whelleville may be up there, and Kennedy somewhere, uh, the next time around. Uh, but if they come with a different district, redistricting situation, like maybe at-large, two at-large boroughs, and, and go back to the seven original boroughs, then we may be looking at a different situation in 2020, if you get what I'm talking about. Uh, redistricting will play a big role in this thing, in 2020.
I'd like to make a suggestion that we look at this in detail much further on, and then suggest that we move things around, but not that drastically. I don't, I don't have any problem with it.
2020 is right around the corner.
Need to give them an idea now as to where we want to move it to.
Because they have to turn this in.
Yes.
They have to turn this in, so we have time. Well, uh, there was a motion, I thought, on the floor.
Yes, I did make a motion, um, does...
You can second the motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
So we, so we have to vote on my motion, and then... Sir?
Motion is only one motion been made. Your motion is the only one been made thus far.
That's right, but it's been seconded already, so now we need to vote on it.
Okay, well, you go ahead and...
Yes, sir.
Vote your motion against, everybody understands it.
Okay. I move that we move the downtown student elementary school down behind Kilby Shores Elementary School, and move everything else up one slot.
I second the motion.
Board members will please vote. Motion is carried, six to one, to amend the CIP to reflect item number six will be moved down to the item beneath Kilby Shores Elementary School, and the numbers adjusted accordingly. Is it number five? Sorry, number five.
Any other questions on, on the capital program at this time? Okay, if not, we'll go on to the next item.
When you, when you all redo this, could you just send us a copy?
Yes.
Email it, so we'll see what it looks like.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have to vote on this, this is a capital improvement plan, so we're going to have to vote on it. We've just voted on the total plan, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Let's go ahead and look at ordinances, second ordinance is through the end of it, first reading only.
No action is needed.
No action is needed, so if you look at that at this time, first reading, one through 11, two through 11. Let's go to public speakers, no, no public speakers in honor of the topics, is that correct? No public speakers in honor of the topics?
Yeah.
Okay, business by board members will go with Ms. Byram.
Um, just a couple of little things. I want to extend a special welcome to all our new teachers who have come on board and joined our team, and we hope that you will have a very beneficial and productive year, and we're glad to have you here. And we thank Dr. DeBransky for his efforts, and Ms. Starling for their efforts to recruit people. I know it's a difficult time, and I know y'all are very happy that you've done the job that you have, and I commend you for that. And that's it for me.
Sure.
Okay, um, I received a letter from a parent the other day that I would like to just bring to the attention of the board, because it personally interests me. She said, "Many school districts across the nation are switching to a no homework policy at the elementary school level. Please consider implementing a no homework policy for Suffolk Public Schools' elementary students. This would greatly impact the quality of their lives in a positive way. My third grader had 90 minutes of homework yesterday. He wasn't able to play with his friends, he didn't have time to do his chores, and he's only eight years old." She went on to say that in, and I looked this up and read some more about it, that in the Norfolk Public Schools in Nebraska, not in Virginia, it says, "All of the elementary buildings throughout the Norfolk Public School District will be doing something different with homework this year. Research continues to not indicate significant benefits of having homework at the elementary level. We believe that when students give us all of their day, they deserve to have all of their night. Therefore, we will not be formally assigning homework this year. Please note, if a student exhibits off-task, off-task behaviors during the school day and fails to complete an assignment, when adequate time has been provided, the assignment will be sent home for completion. We hope that this new procedure will allow you to spend your evenings doing things that are proven to correlate with student success. Eat dinner as a family, and ask them how their day was. Read together, play outside, get your child to bed early. We know that your child is working hard at school each day, and they have earned their evening playtime." I'm only, I'm bringing this to the attention of the board, because I know that Dr. Whitney said, when he was talking to the, I think it was to the new teachers, he said, "Don't forget to give them their recess." And I, I am just bringing this to your attention, only because I think that we need to look at the statistics, we need to look at the research, and see whether, in fact, in grades K through four, homework is really necessary if it is, if it improves scores, which I'm going to contend that it doesn't improve scores, and if it doesn't, then I think we should give those young kids their life back. That's all I wanted to say.
Speaker.
Um, I would just like to say thanks to all of the organizations, persons, and groups that provided the school materials for our students to return to school. Many, many organizations were giving away the backpacks, and the pencils, and paper, and all, so we want to say thank you for doing that, and we ask that you continue to contact our principals and ask the needs of the school, so that we can continue providing them the necessary materials needed to be successful. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Uh, yes, first thing, I received the same letter that Ms. Bouchard did, and I would like to go one step further. I'd like, I'd like a report next month, if possible, looking into our homework policy, comparing it to other homework policies for kindergarten through fourth grade. Uh, the parent had gone on to say, "In addition to the 90 minutes of homework, the teacher required in a, and a 20-minute reading period each night as well." So we're talking about an hour and 15 minutes of work that the child was expected to have completed before they went in. So I'd like us to look at, you know, what our homework policy says, and if it's really beneficial for our students. And, you know, if we could put that report together, I would greatly appreciate it. I'd also ask, like to ask for a community service hour report for the class of 2018, every other month commencing in October during this school year, so that we're able to, to keep up with where our seniors are on their community service hours. And I'd just like to remind everyone out there that the Suffolk Education Foundation will be having their golf tournament at Sleepy Hole on Friday, October the 20th, with a shotgun start at 12 noon. And the Suffolk Education Foundation benefits from the golf course, and it helps us with helping award teacher grants, and paying for AP tests for students, and also paying for tuition assistance for those taking dual enrollment classes. So we, we, Education Foundation would appreciate your support in any way on that day.
I'd just like to say, I'd first like to say thank you to all of the staff, and the teachers, and the parents, and everyone who helped us begin the school year in a wonderful way. There could be all sorts of problems that we did not have, so we're just grateful for that. I'm just grateful for that. I, I think all of us got the same email from the parent regarding homework. My concern is not so much homework or reading to your children at night, because it was something I did as a parent anyway. And as a parent, I'm sure, because I was an educator, I wanted to know what my children did in school today. We discussed it, we went over it. My concern was the length of time it took an eight-year-old child to finish the homework. I'd be concerned, and the only caution I'd have is how much homework you give to children, especially young children. That would be a concern of mine, because if it takes hours for a little one to do homework, then I'd wonder, homework is supposed to be an extension of the school day for reinforcement, not a whole new lesson, so I don't know, and I don't know why it took the child that long. So I'd just like to, I, because in some instances, sometimes it's the child that takes that long to do it, or the way the task is right.
That's why I didn't read that part of the letter.
Right, but the whole 90-minute thing, if there really was a 90-minute time for an eight-year-old to do homework, I'd be concerned about that. Not that they have homework. I know that in Virginia Beach, I had family members who left here and went to Virginia Beach, and the elementary child was really excited, because he didn't have any homework in elementary, in elementary school. I know it's done in some places, I don't know how it's accomplished, but having been a teacher, I can see the positive side of having some homework, and I can also see scheduling some time for children to do it, so that they can still go outside and play. My children got to play, but we read, and we went over schoolwork as well. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I attended a couple of fairs. First, I, we had an open house for the PTA at Pioneer Elementary School Tuesday evening, and as we normally do, and this is one of the highlights of having a school in the area where kid, where people appreciate the school. We appreciate Pioneer, and we don't only appreciate it verbally, but we appreciate it with giving. So the alumni Tuesday evening gave the, the children this $900 for instruction, and the civic league also gave $120 for 20 members who are, live in the community but no longer attend the school, they are senior citizens. But we appreciate the school, and, and therefore, as long as the school is there, and, and we are there, we're going to support the school. I also attended Forest Glen last evening, well, afternoon, 2 o'clock, 2:30 really, with the superintendent, and the, and extended place in the banner, accreditation banner, and the teachers were, was in the paper today, they were very happy, and very enthusiastic about what they had accomplished. So I think that we as a board appreciate the teachers at Forest Glen, as well as all our teachers, but particularly, they seem to have had a struggle in English at, at Forest Glen, so now they can hold their head high and have the banner placed at the beginning of the, at the top of the school, when you walk up, you'll see, fully accredited. Thank you.
I have a few comments I'd like to make. I visited four schools this last week, and each one of them was administered not just well, extremely well. The schools were clean and neat and ready for opening, and the principals there were on top of their game, and they were John F. Kennedy, Woodside, Creekside, Bothell's Fork, and, let's see, one more. Macbeth, that's correct, thank you, Dr. Whitney. And those schools were all brand, look brand new, I'd recommend to, to Dr. Whitney to make sure that he commands the staff of those schools, and also the people who'd help get themselves clean. Okay, action on closed meeting, personnel report.
Uh, where I had it, I had it someplace. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve pupil appeal 1718-1.
Give me a second.
I'm sorry, I think we need to...
I mean, I'm sorry. I'm, be, be denied, I'm sorry, thank you. I had... I, I, Mr. Chair, I move that student appeal 1718-1 be denied.
Give me a second.
Second.
Okay, can I put it on there?
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that student appeal 1718-2 be approved.
Second.
Board members will please vote. Board members will please vote. Open. Motion carried.
Chair, I move that 17/18-3 be denied.
Second. Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I move that the personnel report be approved, be accepted.
I'll second it.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I move that the pupil personnel reports be accepted.
Second. Board members will please vote.
Board members, if you would please look at pages 62 through 88, there are informational items that you might want to look at. If you have any questions, please get in touch with us or talk to Dr. Whitney about them, okay? Here, no further action. We'll count this meeting as adjourned. Everybody have a good safe night, gentlemen.